Member name are all the people here.
We are still trying to connect members, Chairperson.
Yeah, Chairperson, we're all here.
Not all are here.
How many are here?
Chairperson, there are only three members.
Only three chairperson.
Lillet Mama Regan, we are not counting you amongst members. You are a member of the N C O P. Just relax in Cape Town there. How many members do we have, Member name?
We only have three chairperson.
Chairperson, I think Cape Town, you can't be there. You can't be there, you can't be there.
Look at Mama Regan, Mama, go over there. We are not counting you when we are counting members for Coram. Just relax and listen. We are counting members of the Limpopo Legislature. Are we together, Lillet Mama Regan?
Okay, thank you, Chairperson. Thank you very much.
If there are three members, Member name, we proceed. In terms of the rules, if you have seen them, I don't know whether you have ever seen them. We don't need to be any other number when we listen to presentations. The other members can join us.
Yes.
Only when we make a decision of a particular kind that we need all other members to come. Other members can find us proceeding and join. Otherwise, we can't sit here waiting for them because the legislature took long. I think some of them maybe still driving or something.
Yes, Chair.
So we start with the meeting. Thanks very much. Member name, is everyone here who needs to be here from the departments, National Treasury and Provincial Treasury and Financial and Fiscal Commission? Member name, is everyone who has to be here from elsewhere here?
Yes, Chairperson, they are all here.
Thanks very much, let's proceed. We start with the meeting, other members will find us proceeding. We welcome all the honourable members that are here already. We also welcome Honourable Lillet Mama Regan from the National Council of Provinces, who represents us there in the N C O P, who is also here already. Um, we hope that other members will find us as we proceed. The meeting is officially opened and you are all welcomed. Are there any apologies, Member name?
Chair, we are having an apology of Honourable Squadi, who is heading to K Z N for N C O P. They said he will be connecting, but it might have some connection, technicalities, if he gets to the plane.
Agreed, Honourable Squadi, this apology is sent in the hands of H O T Brat, not in your hands.
They've forwarded an apology, Chair.
Hmm, I see.
Yes.
I see. No, thanks very much. We hope that Honourable Squadi, once he arrives in Gazza Natal, where the N C O P is holding a session there and where other honourable members are greeting Honourable Kurpeja and Honourable all of them, we hope that they will be able to connect. But let's proceed. We have the three principal items. We are going to allow them to present. Once they have presented, then we'll allow for questions, comments and any other points that members want to make and stakeholders, if there are any present that want to comment. So everyone is welcome, who's on the platform. Lillet home, this is the portfolio committee of Provincial Treasury in the Limpopo Provincial Legislature. If there's any other point you want to say, you will be allowed to say in that item number seven, as you see there. But now we are going to allow the other stakeholders to make the presentations. We will start with the National Treasury on the 2022 Division of Revenue Amendment Bill. Then, once they are done seamlessly, we'll allow Provincial Treasury on the Limpopo Adjustment Appropriations Bill. And once they are done, we'll then allow the Financial and Fiscal Commission to come in with their submission and brief us. Because this briefing by the F F C was postponed time and time ago. So today is opportune, everyone is here, we are able to listen to what they have. We hope that everyone who is on the platform understands the rules of this such of this kind. We don't have to be repeating them all the time. So if you are here and if you are not speaking all the time, your mic must be off. Otherwise, if you disturb the speakers as they are speaking by making certain noises because you left your mic off, we will have difficulties with you. We may, we may, we may remove you from the platform if you, if you do that. So let's ensure that all your mics are off and only the people who are making the presentation will open their mics at that time and make the presentations. Then we will allow for those who will be making questions, comments, inputs and any other points, then we will allow them to come. Thanks very much, I hand over to National Treasury and the team from National Treasury.
Um, thanks, Honourable Chair, um, Lize Papa Kiss. Um, I'm with my colleagues, Mary, Marvin, as well as Matapelo. So we'll be taking you through the Division of Revenue Amendment Bill. So with your permission, Chair, if I can start sharing. And then each of the members of the Treasury team will then introduce themselves in quite a detail when they are presenting their parts. Um, so Honourable Chair, I'm responsible in the Treasury for the local government. I'm the director responsible for the local government fiscal framework, um, but also lead in terms of the Division of Revenue processes. Um, so if you see my, trying to put it on slideshow now. Yes, Honourable Members. Um, so our presentation will really look at the overview of the Amendment Bill, which we are presenting to you today. And then we're going to talk to the changes in terms of the schedules. So how the Honourable Members and the members of the public are meant to be looking at the bill, if they are looking for certain information, where that information should be. Uh, and then I will then hand over to Mary to then deal with the provincial allocations. And then Marvin will come in and deal with the local government allocations. And then Matapelo will then deal with issues around the Gazette a framework changes there and allocations, as well as the changes to the bill. And then we will then hand over back to you, Honourable Chairperson. So in terms of the bill, so the Honourable Members would know that each time after the Minister has tabled the budget, uh, we then come and present that budget so that the Honourable Members could understand and be aware of some of the changes and proposed changes as well in terms of the Division of Revenue. So that Division of Revenue, which we had brought to yourselves earlier in the year, uh, was then passed by Parliament, as well as signed into law by the President in June. Um, so it contains in the main, you know, the clauses really, um, as well as some of the schedules that contain the equitable share and grant allocations. And as a separate process, what we then do is we then gazette some of these conditional grant frameworks, which are more detailed with some other annex charts as well. So that was also done on the first of July to then say to the spending agencies, that's the information in its full totality, it's law. Uh, they could start implementing projects based on the Division of Revenue, as well as its various, um, uh, statutes, which inform it. We are coming to you today, Honourable Members, following the tabling of the Amendment Bill uh, by our Minister on the 26th of October. And the limitations to this bill, of course, are found in section thirty of the P F M A, which specifies really the limits in which an amendment bill can, can, can deal with. So for instance, there are no wholesome changes, um, that are proposed in the Amendment Bill. Because the, 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 the P F M A stipulates that, you know, in terms of the amendment, we can really make changes on the margin in terms of trying to deal with those things that at the time of the main budget were not anticipated. In this case, some of the unforeseen and unavoidable matters relate to one, um, the, the issues of disasters, you know. So this, this becomes an opportune moment for us to then make a new allocations to disasters, as you would hear that most of the changes we are presenting to you today are really driven from, from that perspective. And of course, there are some of the shifts in terms of the functions, um, as well as some of the shifts within the boards of the departments in terms of where a department thinks it's not able to spend, then it can shift those funds and then address another, another priority. And of course, where there are savings, we are able to then allocate these savings through this process from one sphere to the other or from one department to the other. And so, so this process as well deals with the national rollover. So all those projects that were meant to be implemented in the previous financial year, but for varied reasons were not implemented. Um, uh, but there is proof of commitment. Uh, maybe the contractors are on site and, and there is capacity from that spending agency to also be able to do that work that was meant for the previous financial year, along with the work that was meant for this financial year together. Therefore, that, that rollover would then be, be approved. Um, some of the provisions, of course, to indicate that you cannot roll over the same money twice. Uh, so it's quite important that as we look at this bill, Honourable Members, we have those limitations in place. And of course, also there are some allocations that would have been mentioned by either the Minister in his main budget, but they were not at the time allocated to specific spending agencies. Then we are able at this point to, to then allocate those funds to the spending agencies. Um, so, um, if I may just, um, get into how the Honourable Members and the members of the public meant to look at the Division of Revenue itself. It's quite important, Honourable Members, to first consider that when we came to you earlier in the year, we were coming to present what is in my slide, dear, uh, column A. It's highlighted in red so that it is of reference. Column A in terms of the first table there. Um, so you have considered it is part of the process that went to, uh, came to yourselves, uh, went to the National Parliament, was voted and the President then enacted, uh, uh, in, 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 in some time late in, in June. So where we are coming now to say, with the adjustments that are going to be proposed, that my colleagues will be speaking to, they are actually amending that column A. So if you move to the next, um, a table now, the table below that, you see now that the same column A has been expanded. So now it actually has three columns in it, the main allocation. So the main allocation is exactly what is in the previous table is column A. Um, and then, uh, the adjustment, which is the second column, is now speaking to the proposed changes, uh, which is going to be quite important. Because today we will be speaking quite a lot about the changes that have been proposed. And then if you move over to the last slide, uh, no, in, in terms of the last, um, column there, which is, is, is written as adjusted allocations, you actually see the net effect of the adjustment. So because money has been added to the two spheres of government in terms of the equitable share, therefore the net effect would be that, um, they, they are allocation. So the national and the provincial, uh, spheres allocations would be increasing, uh, by, by those amounts. So that for, for my side, Honourable Members, that, that is it. I'm now going to hand over, uh, to Mary to then take you through the specific changes uh, in as far as the provincial allocations are, are concerned. Thanks.
Thank you, Lize Papa. Um, good afternoon, Honourable Members. My name is Merma Cheke from the National Treasury, from the Provincial Budget Analysis Unit. I'll be taking you through the provincial changes. Um, if Honourable Members allow me, I'll switch off my camera because I'm in watching. So I'm trying to save the data. Thank you. Okay, so in the first slide, we're looking at the changes that happened in response to the disaster. So the first one is the Convention of the Disaster Response Grant. Uh, this is to allow the response to the April 2022 floods. Um, and then funds will be, have been shifted, uh, in August 2022 as follows. One hundred and forty-five million was shifted from the Provincial Disaster Response Grant to the Municipal Disaster Response Grant, while one hundred and twenty million was shifted from the Municipal Emergency Housing Grant to the Provincial Emergency Housing Grant. The second one is the additional findings also for the, in response to the disaster to cater for disasters that may occur in the remaining months of the current financial year. Uh, ninety-seven million is added to the Provincial Disaster Response Grant. Three hundred and fifty million is added to the Provincial Emergency Housing Grant. The third one is a disaster in response to the, that will be used for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of provincial infrastructure damaged by the 2021, uh, December 2021 and April 2022 floods that happened in the Eastern Cape and Gazza Natal, in which they are going to be given one hundred and seventeen million for that. And one billion is, is added to the Provincial Road Maintenance Grant for Eastern Cape, Gazza Natal and North West. Uh, the last one is the Protection and Care of the Flood Victims in K Z N, in which forty-nine million is added in the Provincial Equitable Share for that province. Next slide. Uh, continuing, um, three hundred and eighty-nine million is added to the Provincial Road Maintenance Grant for the construction of modular steel bridges in Eastern Cape and the province of Limpopo. Uh, Eastern Cape will be getting three hundred and eight million and Limpopo will be getting eight one million. Uh, so the construction of the bridges is a part of the Welyse's Way Rural Bridges Program, uh, that is being run by the National Council of Public Works. And these ones are being implemented for now in the provinces that are ready for implementation. Next slide. Okay, so here, Honourable Members and the colleagues, it's just a table that is showing you how the figures have been captured. Uh, so the first one, that is the Equitable Share, that is going to K Z N, that forty-nine million. And the Education Infrastructure Grant, I mentioned that one hundred and seventeen million going to the two provinces that I mentioned. And then we get the changes that happen in the Provincial Disaster Response Grant uh, within the Cooperative Governance Sector, as well as the Provincial Emergency Housing Grant, those changes that I mentioned in the human settlement. And the last one being the Provincial Road Maintenance Grant, or of the one point four million that is going to the provinces that have been mentioned. Next slide. Okay, uh, coming to our province, Limpopo. We do not have, um, much of the changes. Um, the changes on the Equitable Share is just for the members to note. We're not going to discuss it today, it's not part of, of the bill. Next slide. Okay, so here in the next slide, if we look at the bottom there for the Provincial Road Maintenance Grant, that's where then, uh, our province of Limpopo is getting the eight one, um, million, as I have mentioned. I think it's them in the North West. Next slide. Yes, uh, thank you, Lize Papa.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Uh, if I can request the Honourable Members to allow Marvin to then take us through the changes to local government allocations. Thanks.
Okay, uh, good afternoon, Honourable Chair and Honourable Members and colleagues. Uh, from my side, I'm just going to take you through the changes to the local government allocations. Uh, in the main, uh, the adjustments are with regards to disaster response funding, where, uh, funds are being converted from the Provincial Disaster Response Grants to the Municipal Disaster Response Grant, as well as an amount of one hundred and twenty million that is being shifted from the Municipal Emergency Housing Grant to the Provincial Emergency Housing Grant. These are the two that my colleague Mary spoke to earlier. And then there's an additional amount of two hundred and forty-eight million that is added to the Municipal Disaster Response Grant so as to cater for any disasters that may occur in the remaining months of this current financial year. And then there's also additional money for disaster reconstruction and rehabilitation. And then for, for, for this one, it's for infrastructure that was damaged during, uh, December 2021, as well as the April 2022 floods whereby three point three billion is added to the Municipal Disaster Recovery Grant for the Eastern Cape, Gazza Natal and the Western Cape. And, uh, there is just a breakdown in terms of the three point three billion between the three provinces. And then also an amount of ninety-two million is added to the Informal Settlements Upgrading Partnership Grant for a town in municipality whereby this money is for the purchase of land that was identified in order to cater for households that were displaced as a result of the floods. Next slide, please. Okay, uh, in terms of, uh, rollovers from the previous financial year, an amount of one million is rolled over in the Integrated National Electrification Program to fund, uh, the electrification of fifty households. Uh, then, uh, there's also an amount of fifteen million that is also rolled over for the Regional Balkan Infrastructure Grant to fund operational payments for the Val River pollution in Amfuleni. And then also an amount of hundred million in the Neighbourhood Development Partnership Grant is shifted from the direct to the indirect component of the grant, uh, whereby the funds will be used for project preparation, planning and implementation for municipalities that are currently having challenges, which are affecting the implementation of projects. And then, uh, these funds will be used for the projects they already allocated for in the direct component. Next slide, please. So this is basically the summary of the changes to the local government conditional grants. Uh, what's important to note is that for Limpopo, there are no adjustments. So that meaning that there are not any additions nor any reductions to the allocations to municipalities in the province.
Um, thanks, thanks, Marvin. Uh, so Honourable Members, I will now hand over to Matapelo to then take us through the Gazette. Um, I have block shedding, so I'm struggling to move the slides. So I'll just, uh, stop, uh, sharing so that Matapelo can do it on his side. Thanks very much.
I'm all right, thanks, um, Lize Papa. Good afternoon, Honourable Chairperson and Honourable Members. Uh, my name is Matapelo Mapangela, also from the National Treasury. So I'll be, um, presenting the remaining couple of slides. Um, I see, um, the share button on my end is inactive. I'm not sure, Lize Papa, if you had stopped sharing.
Yes, I heard, let me, let me start then. Okay, let me do it from my side, hopefully. It's not gonna give us, uh, challenges again.
Thank you. Okay. Um, thank you, thank you, Lize Papa. Um, yes, if you can, um, so the, um, this slide, Honourable Chairperson and Honourable Members, um, outlines the consultative process that as the National Treasury, um, we are required to undertake, uh, to make any changes, um, 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 to the conditional grant frameworks that would have been gazetted when the Division of Revenue Act was, um, was, was enacted. So, um, in terms of section fifteen, subsection four, um, of the Division of Revenue Act, and the National Treasury is required to consult Parliament and yourselves, um, if there are any changes that we would like to make, either to correct an error or an omission that was made, um, in the actual, um, act itself. And thereafter, Parliament will then be requested to consider, but also approve, um, the changes to those conditional grant, uh, frameworks that we will be, um, explaining in the next couple of slides. And once the bill is enacted, then the National Treasury will gazette the amended frameworks, um, that we are presenting, um, before the committee today, um, as well as any amended allocations per municipality. And these are outlined in Annex chart D and E, um, as well as Appendix A of the bill, as well as any changes per province, um, for disaster response allocations, which are currently included in Appendix B, um, of the, um, of the bill. Um, and then in terms of the, in terms of the changes that we are, in terms of the changes that we are making to the, um, to the, to, to the frameworks and allocations that were gazetted when the, um, actual act was enacted. The first, um, change, um, that we are requesting, um, approval for, um, is with regards to the Provincial Roads Management Grant, um, Conditional Grant Framework. And for this grant, we are requesting, uh, that we amend the framework to allow for spending to respond to the disaster, uh, which occurred, um, in April 2020 this year. And for spending on rural bridges, um, under the Welyse's Way Rural Bridges Program, um, as my colleague would have explained. And then we are also requesting approval to amend the Education Infrastructure Grant, as well as the Municipal Disaster Response Grant Frameworks, um, to allow for spending to respond to the disasters which took place in December last year, as well as, um, in April, uh, this year. And then we are also requesting approval, um, to amend the Informal Settlements Upgrading Partnership Grant Framework, uh, but the municipalities component of the grant, as such that we can earmark, um, the ninety-two million that was allocated, that my, um, that my colleague Marvin, um, expanded on, um, which was allocated, um, for the acquisition of land, uh, for those, um, um, households that are currently displaced, who were residing in formal settlements, which unfortunately due to the floods which took place in April. who were residing in informal settlements which unfortunately due to the floods which took place in April um were washed away. So there has been land that has been identified. Um um so the ninety two million is um is is will be used to purchase that land. So we are requesting that we earmark that funding um 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 in the in the grants framework. And then there has been um a change or an update to the name of the Ingobo um local municipality in the eastern cape. Uh so the municipality has changed its name to Dr. Abinguma, a local municipality. And this was gazetted after um the 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 Division of Revenue Act um was enacted. So we are requesting that we update the name of the municipality as it was updated, as per um um gazet uh as gazetted uh in terms of section twelve of the Local Government uh Municipal Structures Act. Uh next slide please, Letzep. And then the next couple of slides, um they are not moving on on my end. Um okay, I see the, okay, I see the the button is in is is active now. Okay, all right. Um so um this slide, um honourable chairperson and honourable members um outlines um um a couple of errors um that are included um in the bill and that we are requesting um approval for. And the correction of this error is mainly um an oversight um from the uh from the provincial uh disaster management center in KZN, but also um from the recommendations that were made to the National Treasury by the uh NDMC. So in the bill um that the minister um um tabled in in October on the twenty sixth, um there was allocation that was made um through the municipal disaster recovery grant uh to a number of municipalities in Guazulu Natal. Uh but those allocations are actually intended or are supposed to be allocated to local municipalities. Uh but in the bill, um they are allocated to district municipalities, and this is mainly page thirty six um of the um of the amendment bill. So what we are requesting is that um once um 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 what we are requesting is that we um make this correction um so so that funds um or we adhere to the uh funds for law function uh principle, so that these funds can be allocated to the municipalities um where the function resides. Um a similar oversight was made um in western cape whereby allocations were made uh or in the bill, allocations are made to a number of district municipalities within the western cape. But in actual fact, those allocations were meant for or are meant uh for a number of local municipalities within the province, and this is reflected in page thirty nine of the bill. Um again, we are requesting that um we are requesting to make this change uh because if we don't make this change, then um it doesn't mean that the local municipalities won't be able to spend the funds, it's just that it will take a much longer process for the resources to be transferred from the districts to the locals. And given that these funds are intended for the immediate um a relief of disasters which took place in April as well as in December, uh we would really um um it it's important that the process of allocating or the flow of funds for this function is expedited. So we are really requesting that um the honourable chairperson and honourable members um endorse that the National Treasury make um this um um amendments or these amendments in the um once the bill has been um um once the bill has been once the bill has been um um approved or when when the bill is tabled. Um next slide, please, Letzep. And then um as part of the following the different requests that we have um um you can move to the next slide, please, Letzep. So as part of that, that a number of requests that we have received um from a from a number of provincial, uh from our provincial counterparts in terms of the importance of uh leveraging on private sector um investment and the need um for uh for a provision for pledging of provincial conditional grants. Um and also following um um in light of the 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 pronouncement that was made by the minister when he was tabling at the actual um the actual budget in in eh in in February. Uh we are making a change to uh section seven of the Division of Revenue Act uh to allow for the pledging of uh provincial conditional grants, and this is really to uh leverage on infrastructure development um at the at the at the provincial sphere. Uh so the um so section seven is amended to also include a number of co- or a number of conditions that uh provincial treasures will then have to comply with um when they want to make um they when they want to access or want to make a provision of the um um of the pledging um um of of provincial conditional grants. So this is mainly included as part of um section uh seven of the of the amendment bill. Um and then um this brings me to the end of my presentation. Um thanks, um Letzep.
Um thanks very much, I'm Matapelo. Uh honourable chair, um that that's the end of our presentation. Uh we would like to hand back over to you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, honourable chair and all your committee members, honourable members, colleagues from National, from the Financial Fiscal Commission. Uh it's Gavin Pratt, head of Provincial Treasury. I'll just take you through the um our adjustment budget that's just been tabled in the legislature. I just wanna share that presentation. Thanks, Chair. I trust you can see it. Um if I may continue. Um so we're just presenting the proposed adjustments that have just been tabled. We'll just give you the purpose, the background, our rollovers, both equal share and conditional grants, our own revenue increase. And then the additional provincial resources that I think National just spoke to that are coming in. And then our proposed allocations, and then just briefly touch on the appropriation act, uh adjustment appropriation act, and then the recommendations. At the end of the presentation, we've included the detailed schedules for each department, which I won't go through unless the chair then directs. So as Treasury, we just then requesting the Treasury Portfolio Committee to consider and support for approval the twenty two twenty three proposed increase in our provincial allocations from seventy four point two three zero billion to seventy eight point one five four billion and the associated allocations per department and public entity. I won't go through section thirty one. I think National Treasury touched on it quite eloquently um that we can then appropriate any additional funds and foreseeable unavoidable expenditure, any shift in any uh viaments or moves between the votes or the main divisions of the votes, and then the rollover of the funds. In terms of our equal share rollovers, um just to share with the committee then that we um had unspent uh budget um of nine hundred and uh one point six five five billion rand. Then we had request of seven hundred and sixty seven million rand, which excludes the provincial legislature's forty five million rand that's then automatically rolled over in terms of section twenty two of the PFMA and also their own revenue that's then retained of just over two million rand, which makes the recommended rollover around forty seven uh million rand. So we've then approved the rollover of eight hundred and two million point five six seven to our um provincial departments from an equal share perspective, which then allowed or surrendered eight hundred and fifty five million to the provincial treasury revenue fund to be used to be reallocated through this adjustment. Um so it's not moving now. Um yeah, so that's just the the story. I won't go through that, but it's really just to then share with the committee um on the narrative to that. Then on a conditional grant, I won't talk to each department. Um these were then um submitted to National for consideration. Um just as a total, uh of the eleven point four eight two billion from last year, we spent ten point three two zero billion. An under spending of one point one six one billion. Um and National Treasury approved a rollover of eight hundred and twenty seven point zero seven one million rand, which then implied that we had to surrender as a province three hundred and thirty five point three three nine million rand back to the National Fiscus. The main surrender came from the Department of Education, ninety three point eight million, agriculture, eighty point two million, public works, sixty two point five million, Coxter fifty two million, and sports arts and culture, thirty two million rand. So we've then approved uh or National has approved the eight twenty seven point zero seven one million rollover on conditional grants. In terms of our own revenue, you will see quite a significant increase here. Um but if you look at public works, roads and infrastructure, the five hundred and twenty two million includes the surrender from the road agency Limpo Po to the revenue fund, which is then re-appropriated through this adjustment as a new allocation. So our revenue grows from one point four eight one billion to two point one seven five billion, but noting the five hundred and twenty two million includes an amount of five hundred and seventeen million from rail. So our own revenue is actually growing um by a hundred and seventy seven million um for the period, and that money we've also then reallocated through this adjustment. So in total, Chair, um we as a province then receive increases um of two point two seven one billion rand, being the conditional grant rollovers that have been approved by National of eight twenty seven million. As reported by National, the eighty one point zero two three million for the provincial road maintenance grants for the rural bridges. And then our own revenue increases by a hundred and seventy seven point two nine four billion, obviously including the rail surrender of five hundred and seventeen million. And then as National also reported, the one point one eight six billion for the national wage increase um that's come to the province. So our total receipts then move from seventy six point two seven seven billion to seventy eight point five four eight billion um as at the adjustment period. Of those funds, Chair, then um we then allocated um an additional three point nine two three million uh billion, sorry. Um so that would include the surrender that was come back from last year in the equal share. And then, as we said, the two point two seven one billion that um National has allocated to us. So officer the premier then increases from four hundred and seventeen point five million by twenty five point two million to four hundred and forty two point eight million or six point one percent. Legislature moves from three hundred and eighty five point nine million to four hundred and ninety four point two million, an increase of a hundred and eight point two million rand. Education moves up by one point one eight one billion from thirty six point four four five billion to thirty seven point six two six billion. Agriculture, um one point six five seven, increase of a hundred and thirty six point six million to one point seven nine three uh billion. Treasury uh returns six point seven million. Their budget decreases from four hundred and nine point nine million to four hundred and three point one million. Economic development increases by a hundred and twenty three point three million from one point six to one point seven three five billion. Health increases by eight hundred and sixty eight million from twenty two point seven two five billion to twenty three point five nine three billion. Transport and community safety uh moves from two point three six five billion to two point four nine one billion, an increase of one twenty six point four million. Public works moves from three point four seven one billion to four point three five four billion, an increase of eight hundred and eighty three million rand. And then sports arts and culture from five hundred and thirty three point two million, an increase of sixteen point five million to five forty nine point eight million. Coxter, two point four one eight million uh billion, sorry, an increase of three hundred and forty one point seven million to two point seven six zero billion. And social development from one seven eight seven billion uh to one nine zero seven billion, an increase of one point one nine point four billion.
As I said, you will attend to my things tomorrow.
Sorry, Chair. Um so that's the total then. We're increasing from seventy four point two billion original allocation that was passed by the legislature to seventy eight point one five three billion rand. Um that includes the salary increase that's been given to us of one point one eight six billion. The rollovers, both conditional grant and equal share, and obviously the money that was surrendered to the revenue fund, we've allocated back towards pressures mainly on contractual commitments in our departments, but also to deal with the pressures in health around medical supplies and in uh public works to also deal with uh the yellow fleet, um repairs and maintenance, and the payment of the the building that we purchased in um in this financial year. In education, mainly on CRE pressures, also an amount to the um scholar transport where pressure has been highlighted now with margin of schools and the petrol prices, and hopefully that that will address um that pressure there. Coxter mainly is the rollover for the human settlements development and informal settlements grant. And social development is pressure in goods and services that we've then addressed. So in total, our budget will then increase by five point three percent um through this adjustment budget. Our recommendation then is just for the c- committee to note the conditional grant rollovers approved by National of eight hundred and twenty seven point zero seven one million for the twenty one twenty two from the twenty one twenty two year to twenty two twenty three year, and the additional allocation of eighty one point zero two three million for public transport maintenance or the rural bridge project. The additional allocation of one point one eight six billion in equal share to fund the national wage increase. And then the portfolio committee to support in the approval of the increase in our provincial adjustment budget from seventy four point two three zero billion to seventy eight point one five four billion, and also the associate allocations per department and public entity. The next is below, I won't go through, Chair, but it gives the detailed breakdown per department um what we then moved in and what it is funding. Uh and with your permission, the MEC dealt with that in his budget speech. Um but we can take questions if need be. Thanks very much, Chair.
Um we are the FFC. I think it's our turn now to do the presentation. I think our presentation was lighted just now. Uh just to thank um the chairperson and the honourable members for um giving us this opportunity as the Financial and Fiscal Commission to make our presentation. Uh also greetings to our fellow colleagues from National Treasury and the Provincial Treasury. Good afternoon. Uh Chairperson, as the Financial and Fiscal Commission, uh we are here to present to your good selves our submission for the twenty twenty three twenty four Division of Revenue submission. The Financial and Fiscal Commission is a constitutional body mandated to advise Parliament and provincial legislatures on the equitable division of revenue and any other financial and fiscal matter. Quite important to note that all legislation must be uh considered, must first consider the recommendations of the FFC before that legislation is enacted. Next slide, please. Our submission, um Chairperson, um is guided primarily by the Constitution, the Intergovernmental Fiscal Relations Act, the Money Bills Amendment Procedure and the Related Matters Act. And for the twenty twenty three twenty four submission, our theme is addressing socio-economic vulnerabilities through fiscal transparency and strategy. Over the past two years, government has tried to balance the maintenance of fiscal sustainability alongside the need to provide social relief interventions in the face of the pandemic, rising unemployment and widening inequality due to joblessness. This effort has been marred by a myriad of delivery shortcomings, irregularities, fruitless and wasteful spending, and a deepening of corruption exacerbating the country's already vulnerable fiscal position. Next slide, please. Our submission is primarily um Our submission is primarily um categorized into three parts. Part one, we will touch on combating corruption and unemployment and will unpack that. Part two will speak to the economic and fiscal monitor and will discuss various issues there, including assessing the debt sustainability in South Africa. Uh, part three, Chairperson and members, we will review um and refine division of revenue instruments. We'll look at various uh issues there, including the independence of fiscal institutions. And I want to hand over to our research team to take us through the presentation in detail. Thereafter, we'll entertain questions and comments. Thank you, Chairperson and members.
Uh, good afternoon, Honourable Chair and uh members, as well as colleagues uh from other esteemed uh institutions. Uh, they mean fly through some of the uh more recent developments uh from the macro perspective. Um, obviously, uh, the global economic scene, um, as we also learned with the M T B P S has been uh uh still in the very much uncertain uh realm. Um, overall, however, that uncertainty had coupled with the commodity price cycle and some of the windfalls there uh did uh push us into uh some on the, onto a slightly stronger holding but of uh the fiscal front. However, financial uncertainty as in the inflation rates, as well as a global overall um uh prospects uh for uh stability uh is under threat. And what that means ultimately is that relatively speaking, um, albeit South Africa is on a stronger footing uh than originally envisaged. However, um, that's um temporary position may also be, uh, may also get away from us. Um, as uh internationally, other uh countries uh may, may behave uh rather recklessly in some instances, as we've seen in the U K. Our deficits as well as G D B to um G D or debt to G D P ratio um with the slightly better than envisaged fiscal position means that it will taper off, especially over the medium term. Um, and as well as uh um the unemployment rates um with the recent opening up and as well as getting used to, I think, the post-COVID eh environment. Um, the issue is that uh more and more people are coming back into the job markets to look for work, not necessarily finding them. And in the, in terms of the provincial context, uh, and obviously very much in large parts of it uh is also depending on uh the reality as well as urban uh sort of uh uh structure of the provinces. Uh, in Limpopo, however, um, it is indeed uh accounted as slightly on the risky side on the uh, the labour market dynamics. Uh, moving therefore into uh chapter one, I just want to see that uh 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 our presenter is, should be Nomande, I see she is on. Uh, maybe, uh, if I may hand over to her and as well as the rest of the team to take over the presentation proper of our submission. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, good afternoon, honourable members and colleagues. I'll take you through to the first part. The first part is about strategies for preventing corruption in public services and funding for anti-corruption uh agencies. Here, as we are aware that we know that uh South Africa has uh various uh laws, strategies and institution uh to combat corruption, but the levels remain uh high. And uh it has contributed to, among other things, the income inequalities and the inequitable distribution of resources, which also have an impact on the social welfare programs. We know that the COVID pandemic, COVID nineteen pandemic have created actually an opportunity for corruption in, in South Africa, where in individuals uh took advantage of the concessions that were made uh through the corrupt practices. In the main, this chapter examines strategies for preventing corruption in public sector as well as evaluating the funding models supporting anti-corruption agencies and made some recommendation on steps and measures that can be used to prevent or to eradicate corruption. Next slide, please. Uh, some of the findings uh that we found in the, in the study was that legislative and public finance management reforms uh play a critical role in the fight against corruption and establishing anti-corruption agencies or reconfigure the existing agents is crucial. Uh, is a crucial factor in addressing this uh uh pandemic. Reforms in the public procurement systems and accountability measures are also vital uh to combat procurement-related uh corruption. And also what we found in our case is that there is no single specialized oversight body that has been uh uh given the specific mandate to handle and monitor procurement processes in, in the country, which uh other countries have also uh a deed in repelling corruption in their countries. But here in South Africa, we don't have that. In terms of institutional analysis, we found that there are overlaps in the mandates of the anti-corruption uh institution meant to combat uh corruption due to lack of coordination. And on budget analysis of this institution, we found that uh the budget allocations vary and they are within the budget votes of various government departments. And a significant chunk of the budget goes to uh compensation of uh employees. And also we found that culture of non-consequence management created by the political and administrative leadership to non-compliance, to non-compliance uh measures resulted in an environment uh that uh became vulnerable to this misappropriation, fraud and corruption. And also we, in the findings, find that the political will, ethics and integrity institutionalization in government and society is also a critical lever in the fight against corruption. Also empirical evidence shows that the bottom-up approach that is through civil society in tackling uh corruption is uh essential, which also will support the political will, which is a top-down approach. Uh, next slide and the recommendations. Uh, what we recommend here as F F C is that the prerequisite for any measure uh to fight corruption and move towards support for anti-corruption reforms is consistent political will for good governance and accountability. Political leadership and the commitment to fight corruption should therefore come from the highest office and at the top levels of a country's political system with the following understanding of accountability, where accountability should identify who needs to be accountable to whom and for what. For instance, accountability of political leaders and public official to, to organizational effectiveness and efficiency through compliance uh measures. Also, the presidency in line with political commitment at the top. Uh, we are of the view that it needs to renew, to renew the governance structures of the anti-corruption agencies through the national anti-corruption strategy on the need for reconfiguration and coordination among the eh existing institutional arrangements to repair duplication of these anti-corruption institution in order to get optimal results, including a reconfigured or dedicated funding framework for this institution as a sign of commitment towards the support of these uh anti-corruption agencies. Next slide, the presidency should consider establishing a public procurement authority that is mandated to show greater transparency and standardization of government contracts to organize and manage the public procurement processes and implement a general public procurement policy on behalf of government, which will be guided uh by the principles of the constitution. Also, the last one is a, a dedicated or joint civil uh society organization should be established, established that educates and empowers society about the dangers and the adverse effects of corruption and advocates for anti-corruption reforms as a bottom support to the political will. Next slide, here the, the second chapter is on youth unemployment and the interg- and the intergovernmental fiscal relations, which was the case uh of South Africa. We know that uh South Africa has also set up uh many public-funded institutional agencies to address uh employment focusing on youth development and employment in- initiatives such as the National Youth Development Agency, the C I T A. And more recently, the Presidential Youth Employment Initiative with the aim of promoting youth uh development and employment. Uh, these interventions, we know that they are funded through the I G F R system as well as uh the conditional grants and the equitable share. Hence, the overall aim of this study is to understand the effectiveness of the fiscal framework and a relevant public institution in addressing these uh youth uh unemployed challenges. What we found in the study is that, that the evidence showed that government spending and increases in taxes have not resulted in a reduction of unemployment, that is, increases in government spending have been associated with increases in the unemployment rate. The evidence also uh indicated that government investment have increased employment. Therefore, uh, government investment and consumption expenditure reduces uh unemployment. Also, labour market interventions such as the E P W T, E P W P, the Jobs Fund have resulted in some of the economic opportunities at the macro level, but they have no significant impact on reducing the, the high unemployment rate. Next slide. In terms of the recommendation, uh, we recommend that the proportion of gross fixed capital expenditure in the composition of the budget should be systematically increased, consumption expenditure should be reduced. And uh there is a need to remove structural and institutional rigidities that impact on private investment in reducing uh unemployment. Also, we recommend that to better target and increase the impact of the incentive, the commission recommends revising the employment eligibility age from eighteen to twenty nine years old. The age group of twenty four to thirty four years has a relatively high rate of individuals which are not in education, employment or training compared to the fifteen to twenty four years old. Also, we are of the uh view that National Treasury can also consider deepening the employment tax incentive to encourage hiring young women who, who are not in employment, not in education, rate is relatively higher than their male counterparts. The Department of Employment and Labour, the Department of Higher Education and Training, the Department of, of Women, Youth and Persons with um Disability should coordinate all labour markets and skills program where the Department of Women, uh, Youth and Persons with Disability has a mandate of enabling the empowerment and the socio-economic upliftment of youth and women. And thus, a well-connected labour market intervention could bolster the impact of existing labour market programs through more significant integration and leveraging of initiatives. I will pass over to uh my colleague, Nukalu. Thank you.
Thank you, Nomande. Uh, good afternoon, Chairperson and honourable members. Um, I'll be taking you through part two of the submission, which includes um chapters three to six. Uh, chapter three assesses the, the country's debt sustainability. Um, as you may all be aware, South Africa faces high levels of uncertainty regarding its um public debt levels. Um, fiscal vulnerabilities have become more apparent due to COVID and the changing um economic climate. Um, over the last ten years, specifically, the debt to G D P ratio has doubled. Um, and in twenty 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 one, it reached um seventy point seven percent. Um, increasing debt service costs continue to crowd out um expenditure on, on basic services. Although South Africa's debt levels are below those of several advanced economies, our interest rates are considerably higher. Um, so this chapter assesses um debt and its sustainability. Next slide, please. Um, in terms of the findings from this chapter, firstly, a sustainable debt path is where the fiscus is committed to stabilizing debt uh by mitigating debt service costs, um adjusting the primary balance and seeking um improved growth while protecting the needs of the population. Um, and the figure presented shows the interest growth differential, which is a frequently used indicator in debt sustainability um analysis, and it compares the, the growth rate to the interest rate on, on debt. Um, so as shown in the figure, since twenty fourteen, um, the real interest rate has been persistently higher than the growth rate, uh which doesn't favor debt sustainability as higher interest rates are associated with a higher cost of debt. Um, and lower growth would be associated with a higher debt to G D P ratio. Um, so overall, debt sustainability appears to be weak due to sharp increases in the debt stock um and debt service costs, um indications of unproductive debt and vulnerabilities to macroeconomic shocks, um which indicate unfavorable conditions. Next slide, please. Um, so four recommendations are made in this chapter. Firstly, the fiscus through um the Minister of Finance um should strive to rein in rising debt service costs, which make up a substantial portion of the budget. Um, secondly, um, the Minister of Finance should um exercise and maintain um fiscal discipline via active debt management and regular reporting regarding debt accumulation, costs and sustainability. Um, thirdly, weak productivity and expenditure should be addressed to create job-enhancing, income-generating growth uh through quality expenditure and investment enticing um reforms. And lastly, investor confidence must be boosted by signaling that public data is sustainable in the long run to reduce um sovereign risk ratings, the cost of debt, um and to ensure the continuation of economic support. Next slide, please. Um, so chapter four covers uh affluence and inequality in South Africa's labour market. Um, income inequality in South Africa has remained high and persistent. Um, and this undermines the inclusive economic growth needed to put the country on a sustainable um development path. So although um government grants have played an important role in reducing poverty, um slow economic growth as well as suppressed and unequal growth in wages has limited the extent to which um cash transfers can, can reduce income inequality. Um, the key driver of overall inequality in South Africa is earnings inequality from the labour market. Um, and this chapter investigates earnings inequality and earnings trends across um different income groups to emphasize the extent of inequality and to identify key shortfalls in the current uh policy environment. Next slide, please. Um, in terms of the findings from this chapter, firstly, um, income inequality in South Africa continues to be amongst the highest in the world. Um, and this is for both advanced and emerging countries. In twenty seventeen, the top ten percent of earners received close to half of um total monthly earnings in real terms, while the bottom um fifty percent of the population received a share of eleven percent. Between nineteen ninety five and twenty seventeen, wage growth across the entire um earnings distribution appeared to be slow with the exception of the top one percent um who have seen substantial um income gains. Another finding from this chapter is that the poorest half of the, the population's share of total income has gradually decreased, while the top ten percent and top one percent's um income share has, has increased. Um, and it was also found that the economy is dominated by the services industry across all um earnings groups. Um, finance dominates amongst the most affluent, uh trade, domestic services and agriculture are more prominent amongst the bottom fifty percent of the population, um while the number of people employed in manufacturing appears to have decreased. Next slide, please. Um, this chapter has two recommendations. Um, firstly, the commission recommends that policies aimed at reducing inequality should be targeted at reducing um inequality in the labour market. Um, and this requires policies that enable large-scale job creation and more equitable wage growth across different sectors of the economy. And this may require um greater investment into labour, invest intensive rather, um industries that are able to absorb um low-skilled workers into the labour market. And the second recommendation is that Stats Essays should increase its efforts to enhance the transparency of data and harmonization of data sets to allow for more comparable um accessible and reliable income statistics. Next slide, please. Um, so chapter five covers the effects of social grants on um household behavior and expenditure patterns. South Africa's social grant system is widely successful due to its ability to reduce um poverty. A point made in this chapter is that the effectiveness of grant systems is generally considered on poverty and inequality um reduction, but rarely on applied methods such as consumption. So this chapter examines the dynamic impact of um social grants and recipients while measuring the effect on the fiscus by observing changes in um household consumption behavior and expenditure patterns. And to add context, over thirty percent of South Africans, South Africans receive a monthly um social grant. And the demand for social grants um is rising due to the country's um struggling economic conditions. Next slide, please. Regarding the findings from this chapter, a case study on the social grant network was done. Um, and this revealed that the social grant system is efficient in reducing um poverty and inequality. Um, it was also found that while the grant network serves millions of South Africans and achieves um policy intentions, it's not really Um it was also found that while the grant network serves millions of South Africans and achieves um policy intentions, it's not really evaluated by um the Department of Social Development. Um another finding relates to the finance and fiscal impacts on the national budget. Um although the grant system is experiencing immense expansion, the limited fiscal scope of the government um limits the ability of policies to attain optimal um welfare outcomes. Um and then regarding consumption trends of grant recipients, the research findings suggests um suggest that recipient household consumption increases positively with grant uh receipts, particularly for food um and healthcare items. Next slide, please. Um four recommendations are made in this chapter. Firstly, the amount of the child support grant should be recalculated. Um currently, the amount of the grant is not calculated using a specific metric or policy intended amount. The commission therefore recommends that eh the calculation method um should be reconsidered to accommodate the basic needs of children. The second recommendation is that government should partner with the private sector to support um child support policy intentions. Um it's also recommended that social grants should be integrated into existing social development programs. Um for example, the the child support grant can be can be combined with early childhood um development opportunities. Um and lastly, an in-depth investigation into the current social grant network is recommended to inform the the current discourse on um social development. Next slide. Um so chapter six investigates um wage trends by assessing the public sector wage bill. Um over the last two decades, public sector wages and employment levels have grown rapidly in relative terms. Um estimates show that by twenty twenty, public sector employment accounted for about twenty percent of total um employment, and since two thousand and four, the wage bill um has grown at almost double um the inflation rate. When comparing the the public and private sectors, the average public sector worker receives a wage premium of of over twenty percent. Um so the increases in both wages and employment have have generated an aggregate public sector wage bill that makes up a large um share of the budget. Um and this chapter analyzes the public sector um wage bill relative to the private sector to determine um its trajectory and and sustainability. Next slide, please. Um in terms of the findings from this chapter, this chart illustrates um public sector compensation as a percentage of GDP. Um it shows that the public sector wage bill has grown at an average rate of ten point five percent per year. Um in nineteen ninety-three, public sector compensation was very high, uh but it dropped sharply in the mid nineteen nineties, reaching a level of about ten percent of GDP during the early to mid two thousands. Um in two thousand and eight, the wage bill increased considerably, which may have been due to an administrative change um in pay schedules that resulted in large-scale increases um for public sector employees. And by twenty twenty, public sector compensation rose to a level um only previously seen in in nineteen ninety-three um at above fourteen percent. Next slide, please. Um so these plots show the wage distributions of the private and public sectors. Um in all three periods, the distribution of public sector wages is to the right of the eh private sector. Um and this confirms that wages are higher in the public sector than they are in the private sector. Um another finding is that the gap between higher and lower earners in the public sector um appears to have grown. Next slide, please. Uh three recommendations are made in this chapter. Firstly, the Department of um Public Service and Administration should consider balancing notch progression, cost of living adjustments, um and pressures to the fiscus during wage negotiation. Um secondly, the commission recommends that National Treasury commissions um further research to determine what is driving um the increases in real terms of wages for those at the bottom distribution of wages. Um and lastly, the commission recommends that the Department of um Public Service and Administration, together with the Department of Women, Youth and Persons with Disabilities, um should develop frameworks to guide the public sector um on the inclusion of youth um in public service. Uh thank you, Chairperson. I'll hand over to Tando.
Thank you, Nakolo, and um good afternoon, Chairperson and honorable members. I'll be taking you uh through the the last part of the presentation, which is part three, covering eh chapter seven to chapter e eleven. So starting off with eh eh chapter seven. At eh in chapter seven, we were looking at a review of the provincial equitable share formula, eh specifically focusing on the responsiveness eh uh the responsiveness to to the changing social structure. So this chapter is essentially about the allocation of resources eh through the provincial equitable share. The emphasis is on health and eh eh education. The research focused on three aspects eh firstly, the alignment of provincial allocations with the weighting of the eh provincial provincial equitable share formula. And then the second eh aspect eh was the response of the provinces to the financial pressure. And then thirdly, the responsiveness of the P E S formula to changes in the social structure. So the assessment is premised on the analysis of health and eh education expenditure patterns across all provinces. Next slide, please. So in terms of uh the findings, then, what we we note is that eh the lack of uh costing needs means that the provinces allocate eh different eh percentages to eh eh percentages to health and education eh compared to to the what the the P eh P E S formula weighting is. For instance, eh eh the the P E S formula weighting for education is forty-eight percent. And by way by way of example, the Limbo- the Mbombo Province, for instance, consistently allocate more than forty-eight forty-eight percent of its equitable share to education eh between twenty thirteen fourteen and twenty 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 and twenty-one. And we see that this eh similar trends hold true for health eh provincial allocations as well. So what is also worth noting is that pro- provinces allocate more resources to the compensation of employees in the health and education sectors. For instance, eh again, if we use Limbo as an example, Limbo spent over eighty percent of its education allocation from from the P E S on the compensation of employees between twenty eh thirteen fourteen and twenty twenty twenty-one. So then the the important que- question then that arises is, so what drives eh the cost eh eh compensation of eh em- employee's spending? There are two issues that are are present in this regard. The first one is that eh the the bargaining the bargaining process and the P E S weighting are determined separately, and there is no mechanism to integrate these two activities. And this translates into high compensation for employees eh spending. Secondly, the lack of upskilling of eh old teachers necessitates the hiring of additional eh highly skilled teachers. Retaining old teachers and hiring highly skilled teachers simultaneously then means eh that there are increases in the the compensation of employees' spending. And eh the nega- there are negative implications eh that emanate eh from from this. And and eh the first one is that the 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 composition of employees' spending crowds out. The the cost of employees eh spending crowds out the the funding of eh goods and services, thus eh compromising the quality of education. Secondly, we see that also the the compensation of employees' spending results in non-replacement of eh retired teachers and freezing of eh current posts for for teachers, which results in poor education eh education eh eh outcomes. And then thirdly, we see that provinces resort to instituting cuts on the spending eh on on spending or on other eh departments to compensate for for higher spending on health and education, which compromise eh their outcomes. Next slide. So in terms of eh the recommendations, then eh there are three recommendations that emanate from from eh this chapter. Firstly, we are recommending a full costing exercise for the provision of health and education eh goods and services. Secondly, eh the we are recommending the coordination of infrastructure deal- delivery plans and programs. And then thirdly, a skills audit eh that will inform the number of teachers to be upskilled, the design and implementation of an appropriate eh eh training eh program as well. Eh next slide. So now moving to to the to to the next chapter, chapter eight. Eh here, we were concerned with the repurposing and realigning the system of provincial conditional grants eh. By way of background, we we want to make two eh crucial points. The first one is that conditional grants eh are not regu- regularly reviewed to reflect current national priorities and eh their fitness for for purpose and design as well as composition. Eh so with that in mind, this chapter then conducts a twenty-five-year review of provincial con- conditional grants emphasizing on eh funding issues, the dynamism of the provincial conditional grant system, alignment between the grant design and policy objectives, as well as a- allocation eh criteria of a conditional transfer. Eh next slide. So in terms of eh findings, then emanating from this the the chapter, there are a number of them. Eh firstly, a substantial increase in grants eh eh as a share of provincial eh transfer. We see that eh there is a substantial increase in grants as a share of provincial eh eh transfer, and 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 also an intermittent growth pattern of conditional grants that eh fall eh behind the P P E S growth. And we see that out of the eighty-five provincial grants instituted, almost a third had fallen eh sorry, almost a third had a lifespan of oh one year in contrast to the four that existed for more than two decades. Overall, we see that the average lifespan of conditional grants is eh five point six eh years. We see also that the classification of grants reveals that most of them are scheduled five or none eh 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 non-matching eh grants. We see also that education infrastructure grants, the the HIV AIDS and the human settlement development grant suffer from several flaws, including numerous objectives and administrative conditions. You will see that also there is a misalignment between the need eh indicators and grant objectives, long eh grant lives, the the wrong the long grant lifespan is correlated with eh deviation from original objectives. Eh next slide. In terms of the recommendation, we see we see that there are four recommendations that are emanating from from eh this chapter. So firstly, we are recommending a revision of the DORA system of grant scheduling and a clear grant objectives eh eh as well as conditions and outcomes. Secondly, we are recommending an update of the allocation formula for the education infrastructure grant to align eh need indicators and objectives. And thirdly, we are recommending the termination of all HIV AIDS grant components that are not aligned with its objectives and incorporate them in incorporating them into the provincial equitable share. And then lastly, we are recommending the publishing of actual grants allocation formulae for transparency purposes. Um eh moving on then to chapter nine, which was about eh budgets, performance and constitutional rights eh to basic eh eh education. Eh the the first thing that we want to note is that basic education is a fundamental human right, as we all know. Eh the ongoing fiscal consol- consolidation has affected the allocation to basic eh eh to to do allocation to 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 basic edu- eh education. So we see that also basic education funding eh sources have either decelerated or experienced moderate real gro- growth. Eh but declining eh allocations eh we see that they trigger concern over the ability of the government to fulfill the basic eh right to basic education. Eh there there is also a need to balance eh the the spending on constitutionally protected socioeconomic rights with the eh efficient and effective usage of scarce eh public resources. And lastly, we ju- we want to highlight the fact that eh the chapter then with this in mind aims to conduct an assessment of the efficiency of eh the current education spending and eh how it can be re-prioritized eh to protect the most crucial elements of eh the right to basic eh education. Next slide. So in terms of eh findings, then, from from this eh 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 chapter, there there are four key findings that emanate from this chapter. Firstly, that eh the spending efficiency in education can be improved. Eh the costing of basic education eh goods and services is critical in assuring the adequacy of spending and quantifying the impact of budget cuts on the delivery of basic education services. Secondly, eh we note that education cuts should be eh instituted in a manner that eh reduces existing inequities eh or inequalities in 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 the system. And then thirdly, financial and non-financial data are critical in understanding the links between government spending and school performance. Eh and then lastly, we we note eh that the crucial elements of eh the rights to education, such as spending on school infrastructure, must be protected in line with the constit- constitutional prescriptions eh in the Bill eh of Rights. Next slide. So in terms of the recommendation, then, that eh emanate eh from these slides, there there are four of them. Eh the first one is that the costing of, we are recommending, we are recommending that the costing of eh education services to deal with cost eh drivers eh spending pressures and adequacy of eh basic eh education spending. Secondly, we are recommending the protection of the redistributive nature of the basic education funding system in the face of potential basic education eh budget constraints. And then thirdly, we are recommending, we are recommending the collection of school-level data to compile consolidated basic education sector databases and integrate them with eh financial and non-financial aspects of basic education. And then lastly, we are recommending that the Minister for Basic Education should use eh the metrics eh of eh as the foundation of a framework to consult broadly with stakeholders to agree on a guide for spending eh prioritization in the basic education sector that is underpinned by socioeconomic eh rights approach. So moving eh then to to chapter ten, chapter ten was about eh eh the in- independent eh fiscal institution institution and their effectiveness eh can eh can eh cross-country evidence, common features and policy lessons for for South Africa. So eh this chapter essentially evaluates eh the effectiveness of independent financial institutions and their influence on fis- fiscal outcomes using cross-country evidence from seven international case studies. Eh these are then compared with the 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 financial and fiscal commission as well as the the budget office. So next slide. In terms of the 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 finding, the the findings are categorized mainly into four parts. Eh with regards to mandates and and functions of eh of these institutions, what we are recommending is that eh eh what what we found is that most eh of these eh institutions eh eh assess macroeconomic and budgetary forecast. In terms of independence, we 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 found that most of them enjoy legal and operational independence. Eh in terms of composition and institutional models, we found that eh most of them are parliamentary budget offices. And then eh with regards to compliance and impacts, what we found is that almost a third of of them require fiscal authorities to either comply or explain any eh deviation from the forecast and recommendations of of IFIs. Eh next slide. So in terms of eh recommendations, the number of recommendations that eh emanate from eh eh this eh chapter. Eh so we we recommend that the the Budget Office as well as the F F C should endorse macroeconomic macroeconomic eh and 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 fiscal eh forecast. Secondly, we we recommend that eh eh the Budget Office and the F F C should endorse government macroeconomic and fiscal eh forecast eh. And then thirdly, we rec- we we recommend that um the Budget Office and the Commission should host all government policies or legislation that impact on fiscal policy eh and that eh this institution should also monitor compliance with eh fiscal rules or objectives. And eh we also recommend that the government should establish a process of periodically reviewing the operational independence of 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 the eh Budget Office as well as the F F C by instituting a set of minimum standards to detect any changes in in impacting the operational independence of these institutions. And also that eh eh this institution eh eh the Budget Office eh eh and and the F F C should be provided with timely and comprehensive access to relevant information, including the methodologies, eh assumptions and and data used by National Treasury in budgetary planning. And also that the legal basis for for the compliance and explanation of eh eh deviance from from the recommendation principle for for the F F C must be strengthened eh to com- to comply. Eh that that is the com- to comply and explain principles should cover all reports issued by eh the Budget Office and and the and the F F C. And then lastly, that the F F C and the Budget Office should be formally consulted on budget eh formulation and execution. Um moving on then to to chapter eleven, which is the last chapter of the of the presentation. Eh we're looking at here the district municipalities eh concentrating on the powers, functions and the funding framework. Eh what we note is that eh the district development model was eh initiated in two thousand and nineteen based on eh silo- silos across the three spheres of government. Eh the model is is founded on joint eh planning across the three spheres of government. It is a a an for however, established against a backdrop of eh district municipalities that are dysfunctional and in financial distress and the local government sector that is eh and in financial distress and the local government sector that is deteriorating. Uh so this creates then the need to analyze the powers, functions and funding framework of districts, district municipalities. Uh next slide. So with regards to finding, uh we note that there are two types of districts, uh district municipalities. There are those that provide bulk water supply services, which are known as C ones and those that supply bulk water services which are known as C twos. And that they are four uh key funding sources for district municipalities. That is the government transfers, investment, borrowing and other and other own revenue sources. So an average own revenues account for almost twenty percent of their income and transfers constitute about seventy-five percent. What you also note is that government transfers to transfers to district municipalities consist of the Regional Services Council replacement grant and 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 the local equitable share. I don't know, I keep, I keep on hearing someone else speaking, but let me, let me proceed anyway.
Mashaw. How dare. Who is picking on the phone in our meeting? Brad. Who is that Mashaw?
I'm not sure, I miss, I mean, Che, I don't know.
Yeah. Please, if you are not on the platform, as I said, don't touch the mic or anything. Just listen to the presentations until the time comes when you are going to speak. Because already we had people who had been similar to Mashaw. There is a Mo Farma, the A C, and then Don Bitwa where who also their mics were open earlier. Ensure that your mic is closed so that you don't interrupt the person. Uh Tando is finishing already, but we are interrupting him. Proceed, Tando, round off. Thanks.
Thank you, Che. Thank you, Che. I'll 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 proceed. Uh uh I was on the findings of uh our last chapter, so I'll 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 proceed with the with the findings. So we, what we found is that some some districts do not receive the basic services component of of the uh uh L G E S, particularly those that are are not water and sanitation authorities. And as such, uh they rely mainly on the RSC replacement grant to fund their uh their operations. So the R RSC replacement grant suffers from two weaknesses. The first one is that it is regressive in nature because it is based on historical revenue raising uh raising capacity of the district municipalities. Secondly, it it prohibits clearing biases in its distribution across district municipalities. Next slide. So uh on 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 this slide, uh the the figure that we we see compares allocations uh through the Regional Services Council Replacement Grant and the L G S formula. What you see is that the RSC replacement grant exhibits clearing biases in its distribution across district municipalities. There is a considerable variation in the size of allocation across the forty-four district municipalities. Uh for instance, during twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the highest allocation recorded was four hundred thirty-eight point two million for the Amatola District Municipalities and the lowest allocation was one hundred and forty fourteen point nine, sorry, fourteen point nine million for the Central Karo District Municipalities. Next slide. So in this slide, what we 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 seek to demonstrate is the the link between functions and the the requisite funding instrument and and that the relationship between the two is critical. Secondly, what we want to note from 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 this slide is that the funding uh following function principle is vital for an if for an inefficient transfer system. And then thirdly, that the link between the Regional Service Council Levy and the and the functions is weak, implying that district municipalities with fewer functions are allocated. This proportion, this proportionately larger RSC level replacement grants compared to the district municipalities with more functions. Next slide. So in this slide, uh what we want to note is that uh district municipalities are constrained in in playing uh the vital role that is supposed to uh to to be playing as envisaged by the district development model. There is a need to define and standardize the powers and functions of district municipalities and local municipalities. And a new uh sustainable, equitable and objective, objective funding framework for district municipalities. Uh and lastly, we want to note that the funding framework of this this district municipalities is not aligned with functions and section eighty-four and eighty-five of the municipal uh 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 Structures Act. Uh so next slide. So in terms then of uh recommendations for emanating from this uh chapter, there are three of them. Uh the first one, we are recommending a review and repeal of section eighty-four of the municipal uh uh Structures Act. Secondly, we are recommending a correlation between powers and functions. On one hand, and funding on the other hand, to give practical meaning to to the funding uh following uh functions principle. And then lastly, we are recommending the abolishment of the Regional Services Council Replacement Grant. And instead, we are recommending that it be merged to the local government equitable share for district municipalities and the Regional Services Council Replacement Grant under one funding instrument. Chairperson, uh this is the end of our presentation. May I hand over back to our chairperson for closing remarks? Thank you.
Uh thank you so much, Tando, and to our research team. Uh Chairperson of the House Committee, that concludes our presentation. Uh we would like to hand over back to you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks very much for all those mouthful presentations. Members, it has been a long, long day. Uh thanks for those presentations by National Treasury covering various fields in the Division of Revenue Amendment Bill and by Provincial Treasury on the Adjustment Budget that was presented today by the Honorable M E C and now by the Financial and Fiscal Commission on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four submission on the Division of Revenue. And 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 I think all of you have made even recommendations which we listened to. I'm now going to recognize, because we are now at the point where we are we are discussing. Members, I know you are tired, but if there are any points I'm going to recognize you. I will start from my side, members, and mention a few points, then I will allow you. And I'm, when I say members, I mean members of the legislature, but I'm going to allow even stakeholders have been invited and and guests and other people who come from treasure institutions and communities and so on. You have been listening all the time. If you have got a point you want to raise on any of the presentations, you 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 will be free also to raise a hand. This is your meeting, all of us, we are going to talk, all of us, no one is suppressed. From my side where I am sitting, I think we should welcome all the presentations. And in general, without going into specific, they agree generally with the proposals uh of the National Treasury on the Division of Revenue Bill. And ensure that we also generally agree with the recommendations of the Financial and Fiscal Commission in general. And yeah, then the points that I will raise from my side are the following points. That talk to a number of issues, particularly the Adjustment Appropriations. Particularly the Adjustment Appropriations that were tabled today in the provincial legislature by the Honorable the M E C. Uh because they were tabled today. I think the the first point we we ask there is will they spend all the adjustment adjusted budgets that were given them, H O D Brad? We are asking that question because you will remember it was the end of that financial year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We we gave uh public works, Road Agency in Popo through public works, some two hundred and something million. And they were saying that now they are ready to spend, they are going to spend it. But now, uh when the year end that they had an under expenditure of five hundred million. So theoretically, it means they were more or less not ready to spend the money that we gave them as the Department of Public Works Roads and Infrastructure and the Road Agency in Popo. The, and I think the other issue, uh H O D Brad is around revenue enhancement because there is a tendency by of of the money coming from national to shrink. Uh what what other measures are you taking as the provincial administration to enhance revenue collection? What other strategies are you putting in place in that regard? And my third point there is what measures, because we saw also in the year ended that most of the money that was not spent was conditional grants. And we don't know why, because if you look at municipalities, a number of them do spend conditional grants like the municipal infrastructure grant and other grants up to the last cent. And they get awards for that. Why do we have a problem of spending the money that comes from national in the form of grants that come with conditions, otherwise called conditional grants? And uh and what measures are we putting in place to ensure that we increase the expenditure of conditional grants so that when the year ends, on the thirty-first of of March twenty twenty-three, we have spent every other cent and particularly the conditional grants do not return to national. Because once they return to national, uh there is a problem that we won't be able to to get them back. But uh, I have one that comes from my side is in relation to um because usually at the end of the financial year, you find that we have huge irregular expenditure when the A G comes to look at the books of the of the various departments in the provincial administration. What more measures are we taking to deal with particularly irregular expenditure? Because it's the one that is clearing more than unauthorized is more or less gone. Fruitless and wasteful has gone down substantially. But the one that is a bit up is irregular expenditure. Uh and and and, yeah, yeah, related to that is how do, when other bodies other than the A G discover money that was irregularly spent and they have issued reports on action that must be taken to recover monies and to take action? What do we do in that regard? I'm mentioning this in relation to the P P E uh reports that were issued last year uh by and some this year by the Special Investigations Unit in relation to P P E procurement irregularities. And I'm raising that because you will remember there was a problem where the H O D of one of the department had resigned. And when he or she had resigned, uh the S I U went to court to block her, him or her from getting uh pensions because there is still a case to answer in relation to P P E irregularities for which the report is available. And to that extent, we don't understand how she got released, why there is still a case outstanding related to uh to him or her. My final point in that regard is that H O D Brad were were therefore going to need a report, which it may happen in the coming period. Uh you uh you may have a week or two to 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 do it. Which report will talk about in the previous three years or four the irregular expenditures of the province in various departments. What action has been taken to regularize each line line irregular? And if there was action taken on the person who was responsible for the irregularity, what is the action that was taken? Because in terms of the law, you cannot uh uh allow irregular to go on when action has not been taken against the person or people responsible focusing that irregularity that led to irregular expenditure. So we want that report, all departments, you go to one by one. In this department, there was two hundred million irregular. It was this amount, various amounts. These are the officials that were found to be involved. And these are the actions that were taken against those officials. And that's why we allowed that irregular, what is it called? Condoned that irregular. That's what we want. We want that report because of what happened in health, particularly in relation to the P P E irregularities and the H O D who then resigned. And it was the S I U that blocked that other side, yeah. Those are my points, members. I'm trying to look for hands. Uh honorable members. It's been a long day. Remember, I did that. All other stakeholders also who are present here.
We are here, we are here, Honorable Principal.
Yeah, I don't see your hand. If you are here, you know with this technology, it's not like holding a meeting under a tree there at Amalobo, you know that very well. We we raise a hand through a function that is on the system. You know that.
And thank you very much, Principal.
Proceed, proceed, proceed. Honorable Principal, Donald, please proceed.
No, Principal, it is to say one that I think you have captured the essence in your opening remarks now on the key issues that we may have wanted to include up. But secondly, in our part is to really welcome the inputs from the national, but also from the province. Uh but indeed indicate that it was a great day. Uh we are looking forward, of course, like you have said, and I think H O D provincial treasure is here. We are looking forward to a situation whereby what we appropriated today we cannot define the explanation as a fact that it might be held over straightforward. And I think that's the most important point that you have said and I want to amplify because it doesn't assist that you are just as difficult as and they don't spend those resources. So I think that's a very important point I wanted to amplify, Che, but by and large, not that we are that tired, we are concentrating and focusing. not that we are that tired, uh, we are concentrating and focusing here, but I think colleagues were eloquent trying to reflect and capture the essence uh of why we are here. Now your summary has made the life even better for all of us. Thank you very much, uh, for allowing me to talk about this.
Thank you very much, Honorable Slamlela. You spoke very well uh covering the honorable members that side also. That is good. I thank you very much, uh, honorable member of the Portfolio Committee. Are there any other stakeholders from the province who want to make uh points? I see the hand of Honorable Khan Yani also. She wants to come in. Let's get Honorable Khan Yani, but if there are any stakeholders also, they can, I can, they can raise hands and then come in and and make the points they want to make. Honorable Khan Yani, I see your hand.
My apology, I didn't, yes, uh, thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, to this important meeting. Uh, Honorable Chair, let me also welcome all the presentations made by the department and also National Treasury and F F C. Uh, as the Portfolio Committee Member, uh, Chairperson, allow me also to note the reports with additional allocations and also the recommendations. But the only thing that we request our stakeholders is that if they come up with their recommendations, may they please ensure that they are implemented? Because we note them as the Portfolio Committee. Uh, Honorable Chair, under local government allocations uh changes to the local government allocations, they mentioned something like two hundred and forty-eight million addition, but I'm not certain on that statement. Can they repeat it again? Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Khan Yani. Any other stakeholder that wants to make a a point? I do not see any other hand. And because of that, therefore I proceed to allow them to respond. H O D Brad and your team, if you are kind to respond.
Uh, thanks, thanks very much, Chair, and thanks for the the comments and questions. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, whether they will all spend the adjustment budget, Chair, from the pressures that we've seen in each department, it would certainly appear that this money will be spent. Uh, we have looked at plans specifically for R A and that those projects are on the ground, uh, they have all been implemented and that that money will be spent in this financial year. The eighty-one million that has come from national also, according to national's assessment, that that project is ready and that that project will be implemented. So I I'm under the opinion that that money will also be spent um through this financial year. The big adjustments in health, there's certainly a big pressure there on their medical supplies, bloods um and other um assistive devices um and also to purchase additional ambulances. So we're pretty confident that that money will be spent. They have shown a pressure of just over one point two billion in the half-year um O Y M report of which we find in around eight hundred million. So there still may be a pressure there. And I think we've done what we can. Um, so again, we have the view that that money will be spent. In education, the pressure points is on C O E and um and it's clearly there. We can see that the over fifty percent is at September. Um, and we're certainly confident that that money will be spent as well as the budget pressure on scholar transport around hundred and three million, which is again reflective in the spending as at half-year. So we're pretty confident that that will be spent. I think the one area that we are a bit um risky, if I can put it that way, is through Cockster, Chair, um, where the rollover has been granted by National Treasury, but our spending is not moving as we'd like to see it. Um, although there is a national decision that's been taken to give that rollover. Um, our informal settlements grant is certainly not moving at the pace it should be moving. And this additional rollover will um add pressure to that spending. So that's one area that as Treasury, we are a bit concerned, but it's a national rollover that's been approved based on the submissions made by um Cockster. I think for all the other conditional grants, we're pretty confident that those will be spent, the monies that have been rolled over, specifically the the road maintenance grant, Chair, that we've we've looked at quite carefully and those projects, upgrade projects are on the ground. Um, and those projects are are multi-year projects, but we're ready to spend um that money. So it's difficult for me to confirm, Chair. I think it's based on the information that we have. But we will be monitoring that over the next couple of months um and obviously look at that and report back to you through uh our meetings with the Portfolio Committee. On the revenue enhancement strategies, as Chair, I think that's a key issue that we're looking at. You do see that our revenue is increasing, but it's more inflationary. But we do have certain revenue enhancement projects that we've put in place now, like the K fifty-three stations that are going to be extended. That's the driver testing uh facilities in the Department of Transport. Being our major revenue collector, we're pretty confident that that will bring in some additional money. There's also the Mapa Kailto um Way Bridge that's uh been implemented and we think that will bring some additional money. Um, our reserves at Economic Development, Environment and Tourism, which those projects are moving quite well. We've actually allocated additional ten million to them to finish up some of those reserves as the infrastructure projects are moving. And it's now to commercialize those projects based on the infrastructure and the softs that we've given them money for. That tender is about to go out, so hopefully in the next financial year, we'll start seeing revenue coming from our nature reserves. So I think there there are certain um revenue projects that we've put in place, um even for agriculture. Again, um, looking at bringing in additional revenue there. The health, um, big issues to try and collect our our patient fees and debt collectors have been appointed there and we've seen that turn around even in this financial year. So I think from a revenue perspective, it's on, we only have around two percent from our own revenue as a province to to fund or to add to the funding from nationals. So it is very low. Um, and we certainly won't be sustainable on our own, but I think we've grown it from just over five hundred million to one point seven, going to two billion um in the after year. So we're certainly trying to improve that. Um, but yeah, it's still a small portion of our total um requirements. On the spending on conditional grants, Chair, we've set up a special technical committee that meets with all our conditional grant departments. And we're really focusing on the planning um to make sure that plans are in place to spend the money. And we've tried to fast-track the spending within those programs, noting the the issue we had with the Constitutional Court decision around our procurement regulations. Um, and a lot of spending then was delayed and we've then now put in process plans to try and fast-track that spending. And we are seeing that that has picked up quite nicely. Our infrastructure projects also, um, we've we're up about nine percent against comparatively last year, the same time. Um, and we've seen that our infrastructure spend is certainly uh moving quite nicely based on the planning where we've moved close to a billion range from pre-construction stages into construction stages. And I think that's key. Um, that we don't start a year with pre-construction stages. And that's what we're trying to move with this year into next year also is to get projects shovel-ready, if that's the right term, from the first of April, noting that some of these are multi-year projects also. And I think that's what helped us through this year um was that some of last year's projects are still multi-year and moving through. The one project that that is a bit delayed is the the theater um and we've taken money out of sports, arts and culture and will allocate that back into next year as it's only reached the design stages now. And from our assessment, we don't think that the money uh will be spent. But from a library perspective, we've seen that turnaround and we hope that that money will be spent around the grants there. So we do have quarterly um follow-up meetings with all our departments, other than just looking at the planning also, then meeting with them to identify any challenges, any blockages and why projects might not be implemented and any procurement issues that they may have to try and deal with conditional grants. But I must say, it has been a trend that it seems when we put conditions to money that our departments do have a challenge in spending that money. Even some of our ring-fenced projects that we did fund, um, we see that that spending is slow because it's very specific what they need to do um with that money. And in some cases, the national departments also delay in the awarding of their tenders to facilitate uh spending on some of these grants, but we're looking at that and trying to make sure that the grants are spent uh by year end. And it has been a concern, three hundred million going back to national is certainly not what we'd like to um see. Um, while we could convince national that we had commitments for just over eight hundred million and that money was rolled over, we want to get a stage where that money is actually spent in the financial year that it's awarded and that's the target that we set in. On the regular expenditure, Chair, I think we we note your request for the report and we can put that together and and provide it in in two weeks or so as you then dictate. Um, but I think that we'll certainly um put together and and report back um to yourselves. Um, on the issue around the S I U, yeah, Chair, it's it's a difficult one. Um, obviously, H T Ds are then dealt with through the Office of the Premier. Um, but that was then done and she was released from employment and then the the S I U stepped in, as you said, um, to block a pension fund. And that's on the report, obviously. Um, we are looking at follow-ups on all our forensic reports, but we're not always getting the can I say cooperation from all our departments on the status of the uh the recommendations that we made through the various forensics. But as the Treasury, we're following up on on those um forensic reports and also instituting additional forensics where we then find the need to do that. On the underspending and the rollovers going into twenty-three, twenty-four, I think I tried to cover that. We certainly meeting quite rigorously with our departments now to to fast-track spending, noting the delay in the procurement regulations. But through the Adjustment Budget Bilaterals, we basically told them that that excuse or that rationale is something of the past because you're showing pressures now going forward, which means it's not linked anymore to the procurement regulations that you have plans to spend that money and that the money will be spent. The regulation issue may have been a first come middle of second quarter uh reason why you did not spend. But if you're then now showing pressures and then requesting adjustment budget, it means you you can spend that money. So we will be watching that through the the monthly uh in-year monitoring reports and obviously report back through to the Exco and yourself as a committee um to watch that spending as we move through the year. On the local government, I'll ask National Treasury to speak to, but I think it was around the Municipal Disaster Response Grant where additional funds were made available for the the current, rather than coming months, if I can put it that way, but I'll ask national to respond to that. I think I've covered all the questions. I do note M E C Siquat is also in the meeting, Chair, um, but let me end back to you. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, uh, H O D Brad. You always respond up to scratch very perfectly. Uh, you know what you are doing, uh, like an old horse in the field. We welcome Honorable uh M E C Siquat for having connected after traveling uh all the way to Guazulu Natal. National Treasury directly on that point of municipal disaster grant.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Honorable, Honorable Chair. Um, so what uh happened was that, um, so the funds that were allocated um for the disaster relief grant, which is uh the amounts that we we usually use when a disaster occurs uh to try and and rep and assist municipalities. Uh, so those funds are finished. So the two hundred and forty-eight million is then added as new money in that grant to then prepare should there be any disaster in the next uh coming months, municipal months, then those funds would then be released to deal with those. So it's not allocated against any municipality uh at the moment. It's just the money that is a contingency. And should there be any uh uh disaster that okay, I will get assistance. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Mr. Buggis from National Treasury. Those are the responses, members, to the points and questions we raised and they are up to scratch. I'm very satisfied with the with them up to now. I think that takes us to the next item. Um, Manamera. Is Manamera still in the meeting?